All right, good. At this time, we'll call our meeting to order. And our report of compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, and compliance with the Freedom of Information Act notice of meetings in the chambers were posted and furnished to all news media and persons requesting notification. Our executive session, section 30 dash 4 dash 70 A, a public body may meet, may hold a meeting to close the public for one or more of the following reasons: Discussion on employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline on release of an employee, a student, or a person regulated by a public body, or appointment of a person to a public body, leading fire protection district board. Item two, discussion of negotiation of incident to propose contracts, arrangements, and proposed purchase or sale of property preceded legal advice with the legal advice related to pending threat, or potential claim, or other matters covered by the attorney-in-compliant privilege, settlement of legal claims, or the position of public agency and other adversary situations involving the assertion against the agency of a claim, litigation update of Davis versus Jasper County, airport matters, hangar releases, contract discussion, lease, or purchase of aviation fuel trucks, wish of fire contract. And item five, discussion of matters related to proposed location, expansion, or provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by a public body. And that would be our prospect update. And at this time, I'll call for a motion to go into executive session, please.
Would you make your motion to go read that in a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. On paper, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries, and we will adjourn to our chambers. Anybody in the event? Okay, at this time, we'll call for a motion to come out of executive session, please.
So moved.
You have a second?
Sir, cut it.
On paper, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Any actions as a result of the executive session? None? Okay, at this time, y'all would please join me in pledge of allegiance, followed by our indication by Pastor Atkins.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One most holy and righteous God, be come before you one more time, humble as we know how. Father God, be thinking, Father God, how you take care of us, Father God, from time to time. Father God, and also, Father God, we all want to give you a big thank, Father God, how you brought us through the storm, Father God. Everybody was well, Father God. Some trees fell down, Father God, some lights went out, Father God, but it was restored. And Father God, we go through this meeting tonight, Father God, that'd be our peaceful part of even, Father God. What we do, we had to do, Father God, to keep this county going forward. We ask only many blessings in the name of Jesus' name, that everybody see him, man.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Atkins.
Yes, sir.
It's good to see everybody. Thank y'all for being with us. We've got Mayor Harry Williams just walked in, and Mr. Bo White, Councilman from City of Hardyville, welcome. Okay, um, we've got approval of our agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda following change. Change of resolution R. 203-18 to 203, 2023-18A.
Have a motion?
Because of the emergency resolution we did mention.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
On paper, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kim. And at this time, we will have Ms. Ann Kay Wood, our Executive Director of Low Country Legal Volunteers, to present to us. And my friend, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. It's good to see everybody. I feel like we've got a lot of friends in the room this evening, and Jasper County's been really great over the years to Low Country Legal Volunteers. Um, so very excited to be here and speak to you, and share some really good news about what's going on with legal volunteers in Jasper County. Um, Legal Volunteers has been around providing free legal services for over 23 years now. Always has served Jasper County, but I feel like we're at a point where we're serving Jasper County citizens in a much more meaningful way. Um, we serve low-income folks that reside in Beaufort, Jasper, and Hampton Counties. And we're proud to have an office space that we've been occupying since November 2018, thanks to the forward-thinking of folks in Jasper County and the city of Hardyville inviting us to be there. So we're at 36 West Main Street, around the back of the Jasper Chamber in the city of Hardyville. So definitely come see us. Uh, we are very, very excited to let you know that we have hired retired Judge, Bachelor Judge Donna Lina to be every Tuesday in office for folks to come by and receive services, apply for services, get more information about what we do. So what do we do? We provide free legal services in multiple areas. Um, that would be family law is the bulk of what we do. We help folks get out of abuse situations. People get child support. Uh, people with children, um, that are in dangerous situations get divorced, um, get the rights to their home, things of that nature. Also, we help folks lately a lot with eviction defense and unsafe housing issues. We also do simple wills and healthcare powers of attorney. We recently received funding, though, to help folks that are facing foreclosure. So if you have a need like that, don't hesitate to call us. Um, how do you find out more about what we do? Um, go on the website, call us, um, we're at lowcountrylegalvolunteers.org. You can apply for services in English or Spanish, and/or give us a call, 843-815-1570, and we'll be happy to, to serve folks and give you more information. So what else do we do? So basically, for one example, we serve low-income folks. What does that mean? I think you guys are all aware that low-income folks that we serve generally work one to two jobs. So these are hard-working individuals, um, who happen to live at or below 150% of the federal poverty guidelines. So for example, a single mom with three kids would need to make $3,400 or less a month to qualify. We all know that that's barely enough to survive. So what would we do for her if she came to us in an abuse situation that we've seen so many times? Help her get out of that, get the necessary restraining orders right over in that courthouse across the street, get child support, get possession of her home, um, and any kind of protections that she might need. So we serve adults, 18 and up, but really, when we were founded 23 years ago, we were there to serve children in our community that might be suffering under circumstances that they'd have no help otherwise unless we were there. So again, we're proud to be here serving, um, in Jasper County, but we've got more good news. Um, thanks to Jackie O' Bannon and Antioch Education Center, who we've partnered with over the years, we are going to have a wonderful, amazing legal service provider expo, September 16th, at Antioch Education Center here in Ridgeland, from 10 to 2. So who's gonna be there? Well, it's not just gonna be Low Country Legal Volunteers. We're not gonna operate like that. We're gonna collaborate, make sure people get what they need. So there's gonna be representatives from South Carolina Legal Services, Center for Airs Property, and Hopeful Horizons, and many others. So people can come, find out more information, apply for services. We're also gonna have representatives for the solicitor's office for folks that need their record cleared to start that expungement process. So definitely want to get the word out, that's one of the main reasons I'm here, um, to let folks know about that. September 16th, Saturday, Antioch Education Center, right here in Ridgeland, from 10 to 2. So please help me spread the word, and thank you for letting me be here this evening. Um, I have brought brochures. We have some over at the courthouse, but I'll make sure that you guys get some as well. We want everybody to know that we are here for them to provide equal access to justice for everyone. And then I cannot leave without cordially inviting you all to our Low Country Royal. That is coming up, September 23rd, Port Royal. You can go online to lowcountrylegalvolunteers.org. I know there's a big contingent from Hardyville coming, so we're excited to see you guys. We'd love to see all your faces there. We appreciate your support, and thank you so much for allowing me to speak to you.
Any questions for Ann from council members? Ann, we appreciate you coming, and I, uh, I guess went by probably last year and toured y'all's office there on 170 and got to meet your team, and that was a pleasure, and what a blessing y'all are for our community and families in need. Because without you guys, they may never even have the opportunity to, to take care of some of the personal business.
Yes, that's very true. We appreciate your sincere support. Um, that's one thing that we've always received a warm welcome in Jasper County. We'd also like to receive some volunteers. Always looking for volunteers to help our work. Um, and then, of course, we're always looking for donations and funding to keep the work going. So thank you.
Thank you for being with us. Look forward to seeing you.
See you soon.
Okay. Next, we have, um, Ms. Grabowski. Did I pronounce that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, and review and update of the comprehensive plan in the U-Haul Broad River Planning Area. So welcome.
Thank you very much. It is my pleasure to be here. My name is Denise Grabowski. I'm the owner of Symbiosity, which is an urban planning consulting firm based just over the river in Savannah. It's great to be back. Um, I was here with you in, beginning in 2017, um, for your last major update of your comprehensive plan, and honored to be back here again. The plan was adopted, as you know, in 2018, and now we're coming to the timeframe where, um, an update of the plan is required. So I'm just gonna walk through kind of a high-level overview of the schedule that we have outlined for the comprehensive plan update, and in particular, given the moratorium that was recently put in place, want to talk a little bit more in detail about how we're going to schedule, um, our work moving forward in the next several months to be able to get the county where you want to be, um, to address those needs. So Jasper's journey, as you hopefully know, is your, um, 2018 comprehensive plan, which addresses future growth and development and the vision for Jasper County. And next slide. And your master plan is really, um, this is again, an update of the 2018 plan, and it's really intended to be a reflection of the community's vision. So back then, we had a lot of opportunities for community engagement, and then once again, we are also gonna outline a number of opportunities for the community to be involved. This really is intended to be a roadmap for your future and something that you, as elected officials, can turn to when you are creating policy for the county and making decisions relating to everything from land use to economic development and so forth. Um, we are really gonna start, though, in the U-Haul Broad River Planning area. Um, the moratorium is currently in place until March of 2024, and so we want to be able to build from the work that was done by the Broad River Task Force and use that really as a starting point to be able to move forward in the development, really focusing first in that planning area. Basically, what we're gonna do, we're gonna start in this planning area first, and then we're gonna follow a similar process to expand the plan out to the entire county. But given the growth pressures and what you've heard from the community, we're gonna start in this area first. And so the way that we are really gonna do that is very similar to what we did last time. Uh, we are proposing to establish a stakeholder advisory committee, um, or U-Haul Broad River Task Force, and the organizations that you see listed here are organizations that participate in this effort the last time we did the comprehensive plan, as well as some of the organizations that have been involved on the Broad River Task Force. Now, this list, uh, can be expanded. If there are organizations or, um, others that you feel we need to reach out to, to expand this task force, that's what we're here for, is really to hear from you as the elected officials for Jasper County, whose voices we want to make sure that we hear on this task force. Now, just because you don't see an organization represent on this task force doesn't mean there won't be opportunities for input from the broader community, because that's very important. We just want to be able to have a group that we can continue to work with on an ongoing basis. So you'll probably recognize many of the names that are listed here from the last effort, as well as the effort in moving forward. And our intent really is to extend an invitation to these organizations to be able to participate on the county-wide plan, on just the U-Haul Broad River Task Force, or on both, depending on their level of interest and engagement in the process. Um, so the way that we're gonna move forward in that in our schedule. So this is an overall schedule for, um, the process through March, and I know it's a lot on one side, so I broke it up, uh, into the next two sides to be able to walk through in a little bit more detail. So the first phase this fall, if we can go to the next slide, um, outlines the vision, goals, and strategies for the U-Haul Broad River Planning area. Again, working from, or building from the work that's been done by the Broad River Task Force, but really being able to establish what that vision is, um, and really start to focus on the future land use map updates, and also natural resources protection strategies. So we have the task force, um, Planning Commission workshop identified in here, as well as community meeting in open house, and this is where we're gonna start to look at what some of those strategies may look like. We also have identified opportunity for stakeholder interviews or small group meetings. I'd certainly invite you, if you are interested in having a one-on-one conversation, or if you want to have a conversation about what's really important to you, we're happy to extend that, um, invitation to each of you, to be able to hear from you as elected officials. So that will really take us through, uh, the middle part of the fall. And then towards the end of the fall, uh, we will start to get into the future land use map. So as you know, the future land use map, the intent of that is to paint a picture that will help to guide growth and development in the areas where Jasper County sees appropriate, and also outline what that development should look like. Um, so we'll come back to you, excuse me, with looking at what some of those recommendations are just after the first of the year. So typically with a comprehensive plan, you'll have a comprehensive plan update, and then you'll go in and update the land use regulations, or do other strategies that are outlined in your comprehensive plan. We're gonna take a little bit of a hybrid approach and start to look at the update of those land development regulations concurrently with the update of the comprehensive plan, which really is a great way to do it, because it helps to tie together how the comprehensive plan helps to inform the policies that you are making as the elected officials. And it really shows you how your land development regulations can be a tool in the implementation of your comprehensive plan. And that also helps to make sure that we can stay on track with the schedule to make sure that any development codes that you should choose to adopt would be in place before the moratorium expires. So we'll come to the Planning Commission early January with, uh, the comprehensive plan amendments, and then bring those comprehensive plan amendments to you also in January. The land development code modifications, we go to the Planning Commission early February, and then come to you for the first, second, and third reading in February and March. Um, it's an aggressive schedule. It's doable, but we will be moving pretty quickly. And the last part of this that I'm super excited about is, is an opportunity for this really to be a fully, um, locally-driven process through the way that we're structuring everything. So we're calling it engage, educate, and act. If you can go to the next slide. So really, the engagement part is, um, we've already talked about opportunities to have a lot of information available on the county website, so people can engage in the way that suits them best. We'll have regular email updates, we'll have online surveys, we'll also have workshops and opportunities for people to engage in that way. We also know there's an opportunity to work with community partners in education. Land use is one of those things that people don't really tend to think much about on a day-to-day basis, because it seems so foreign, but yet it affects our everyday lives and it affects the communities around us, so it's really important. So we have these opportunities to work with our partners, um, in helping to advertise events that they may want to hold, which could be lectures, or tours, or forums. The image that you see in the middle is one that was led by, through the Broad River Task Force efforts, so opportunity to continue that type of outreach. And the county will really act as, as, um, a repository of information with a calendar of events. So it wouldn't necessarily be events that are sponsored by the county. The county would just provide a one-stop shop of where people could find the information. And then finally, of course, the action part is the comprehensive plan. So we'll have the draft of the plan available there, so people can review, um, the elements as they are adopted and provide comments that way as well. And then one last thing I'll mention, kind of concurrent with this process, although separate, you know, part of what is incumbent upon you as the elected officials is also to figure out the financing. And what is the cost of development? How does it get paid for? So concurrent with this process, although separate, there will probably also be some additional presentations by your other consultants that have been working on your impact fees along with discussions, um, that you've been having regarding other financial revenue sources that can play into the decision-making process and help you be best informed as you're looking how to guide growth in the future of Jasper County. So, sorry if I went quickly, um, but I'm happy to answer any questions or fill any blanks, and certainly hear any feedback that you may have.
Do you have a, a comment and a couple of questions? One is, if we need to extend the moratorium, we certainly can do that. So we don't want to be rushed. We want to get it right.
Yes, sir.
Um, and then the, like, the planning grid is for the municipalities. Are they included in this, uh, stakeholders to get there? Because those are really the experts.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We have talked, uh, a good deal. We've had several meetings with the county administrator and with the staff about the importance of this really being a collaborative effort. Uh, you know, you are-
They've invited the, like, the City of Hardyville, Town of Ridgeland-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We have not extended any of the formal invitations yet. We wanted to come first to you, to the county council, to lay out our plan, but absolutely, we will be extending invitations.
I incorporated Jasper County, but our borders of, you know, society, just-
Yes, sir, absolutely. Well, and-
The more people we have involved and more input, we can try to make this a very good, you know, decision in, in what we're doing to make sure that we're preserving what needs to be preserved, develop what's appropriate for development, and concerning what, you know, should be concerned. So I just want to make sure we take our time and do it the right way.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, uh, how much synergy does this have with the rest of the county? I mean, you, when you do this comprehensive plan, how do you do that, do it in the U-Haul district?
So it's, it's a little unusual that we're starting in a small area, um, but it's important that we address those kind of more, you know, bearing pressures, and what we anticipate probably will happen is through that process, we certainly will engage with people that might be interested in the county as a whole. And so we'll build upon that process. There may be some things that are a little bit different as we move to the west of that area, but we will certainly build upon that process. We're just gonna be a little bit more hyper-focused, and then once we get the development regulations, um, presented to council, then we'll look county-wide. And it may be that some of the feedback that we hear during this kind of initial phase will very likely carry over into looking at the whole county. And in fact, we hope that many of the task force representatives will serve in both capacities, so that we can have consistency. Because obviously, just like the cities reside within the county, that planning area is only a portion of the county. So we do want to make sure that there's alignment between what's identified for the U-Haul Broad River area and the county as a whole.
Now, is this also, I'm doing this, so I'm not really, does this concern zoning also?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
So how do you do that? See, there's confusion. How do you do that in that little area?
So-
I just don't know how to fit, come to that.
It's a great question. It really is a great question. If you think about it, zoning is one of the tools in your toolbox for implementing the comprehensive plan. There are other tools that are available to you, depending on what goals you're trying to reach. But when we look at land use, your zoning, your subdivision regulations, your land development codes as a whole, that's one of the most powerful tools that you have for guiding growth and development. And so we may, so for example, you will have a zoning district that will exist in areas outside of the U-Haul Broad River Planning area. So if we make a change there, it could in theory impact the entire county. Or we could look at other strategies, such as an overlay district. An overlay district is a, is a zoning tool that allows you to be able to keep a base zoning the same, but put other stipulations on top of it. So as we go through this process, we will explore what all of those look like. And we may come out of this saying, you know what, we don't really have a zoning district that speaks specifically to what we need for the U-Haul Broad River area, so we may come to you and say, well, our recommendation is to explore, um, you know, a new district that might have some modifications. We don't know what that answer is yet, but it's, it can be very confusing and complicated, because the comprehensive plan is really this high-level look, whereas your zoning is what is happening on the ground day-to-day. And we're hoping to be able to talk about, to me, what's most important is that we give you what you need at the end of the day, and not get too, don't get too bogged down in the semantics of comprehensive plan versus zoning. They are different, but what we really want to do is make sure we're giving you what you need to accomplish your vision. Does that help?
Yes, and I just have one more comment, and that's it. I would like to see if you could just, or, or the stakeholder, they're the most important. They limit what we can do. And if they're not looking forward, we can't look forward.
Absolutely. They are on our list. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Next, Ann. Ms. Claude? Mr. Gourmet?
Mr. Chairman, may I just add one thing, Denise? Can you mention that the next step is leaving?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Um, so when you asked a question about U-Haul River, the next step is also- So when you ask a question about U-Haul River, the next step is also to do a special area plan for the Levy area. So that's something that we specifically have identified, and the scope is to do that special area for similar reasons, the high growth pressures, the challenges to be able to maintain a sense of character. So we'll be just, it actually, the Levy area plan, because it's a little bit smaller area, might look a little bit different, but it's because it has the opportunity to be a little bit more tailored. So I'm actually very excited about the opportunities that we can look at for you.
I appreciate it. We look forward to many workshops.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
Appreciate being here.
Okay. Next, we have resolutions. Mr. Andrew Folger, consideration of resolution 2023-18A authorizing the administrator to execute detention and center mutual aid agreements.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you. We have Arthur Benjamin here, Detention Center Director, with me tonight. The resolution we have in front of you concerns a mutual aid agreement for the potential movement of detainees from the jail, the detention center, to Beaufort County and vice versa in the event of an emergency. As common practice the last 20 years probably, we have entered into these agreements with various counties so that when we have an emergency, whether that be a weather event or whether that be a, an incident in our facility where we need to isolate someone, Mr. Benjamin has been very successful in negotiating agreements for sharing these detainees and moving them back and forth. Beaufort County has presented a new one to us. It's a five-year agreement that has a 10-day free period so we can exchange detainees if we need to. We promise the care of those detainees mutually. And if it extends past 10 days, there's a per diem rate of $52 per day for detainees. The mutual aid agreement for detention is different than the mutual aid agreement for emergency services. Your emergency services ordinance, the county has, delegates that authority to the emergency services director to do that. And as you know, he gets into various mutual aid agreements with different jurisdictions for fire and rescue. There is no such animal here for us, an administration, to do that with detention center. And so what we've intended to do by this resolution is to craft a resolution that allows the county council to consider approving the MOU with Beaufort County officially and also resolving to authorize the county administrator to enter into these agreements, as we've done in the past with other counties for the same purpose. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about it, but ultimately this afternoon, we're asking for your consideration for the adoption of the resolution, which approves the mutual aid agreement and also authorizes the county administrator in the future to enter into like agreements with other counties.
Any questions, Mr. Gobain? Ms. Claude?
One quick.
Ms. Kemp? At this time, we'll call for a motion, please.
Still move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you, motion carried. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Benjamin.
Thank you.
And next, we have Mr. Russell Wells, consideration of third reading of ordinance 2023-12, making chapter nine civil emergencies by creating a new vision, adopting restrictions and conditions regarding open burning vegetation leaves and other material related to air duty.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the council. We've brought back three options based on the feedback we have received from the council. Option number one is a timeframe, as requested, that would either be sunrise to sunset. I believe option two is one hour after sunrise, one hour before sunset. So you can start burning an hour after, extinguish it an hour before. Or option three is just burn whatever. So those are the three options that we just need.
It's time to call for a motion.
Still move.
For, yeah, but which option?
Sunset to sunset.
Sunrise to sunset.
Burning that night.
Have a motion, we got a second.
Sure.
Any discussion?
Yes. Last time we talked, you, we had talked about other municipalities. How are they, you know, so we all have somebody next door, neighbors, some from all these who I can't?
This was tasked back to the Fire Marshal to research, and these are the three options that he has brought back. As far as the city party bill goes, I can't recall that anywhere offhand, but I can certainly get you an answer by the time we're done.
I just wanted to walk my eye out of the window. Thanks.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Thank you, motion carried. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next, I think Mr. Chatter still in for Ms. Wagner, but we have a public hearing and second reading of ordinance 2023-15 of an ordinance to amend Article 61, Table 1, Use Regulations, Article 73, Table 1, Schedule of Lot Area Yard Setback and Density and Sections for Duplexes Townhouses, Patio Homes of Jasper County zoning ordinance to remove duplexes, townhouses, and patio homes as a conditional use from certain zoning districts, add conditional use requirements, increase the setback requirements, and reduce the allowed density for duplexes, townhomes, and patio homes.
That's a pretty good explanation, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you.
I'll give you a very simple overview of what this is tying to accomplish. Most of unincorporated Jasper County does not have septic, have sewer services on septic. There's concern about having too much density on parcel land so that it overwhelms the ability to absorb and treat sewage. So this basically takes duplexes, patios, and townhomes and says, you have to be on sewer, can't be on septic. It reduces the density accordingly from, as one of them said, you can have 21 units to the acre. You've got to have sewer to be able to do that. So it addresses that by making those, you've got to be in an area with sewer to be able to build those. Secondarily, it addresses the issue that we have when someone takes a single parcel of land to create a townhome community or rental for rental. It's one tax parcel. If it fails, it hasn't gone through our process of master planning per se. So it says that kind of a project comes, needs master plan approval from the Planning Commission to make sure that all of the things that needs to be accounted for, if it were to become fee units, not rentals, so that it meets our standards. So Ms. Wagner has drafted this to accomplish those goals. Actually, I think she did a better job than I did explaining it last time, but that's the overview of what this ordinance is aimed at trying to do.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the floor to the public. Anyone wishing to address council on this specific matter, please feel free to do so at this time. Public hearing going once, public hearing going twice. Public hearing is now closed. At this time, we'll call for a motion from council.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions from council? There are none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you, motion carried. Next, Mr. Chatter, consideration of second reading of ordinance 2023-16 to establish a board of parks and recreation for Jasper County's apples and limes by Dr. Lee New, Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 4 in the Jasper County Code of Ordinances. Mr. Bader.
If I might just digress for a moment on the last ordinance in the past, we mentioned it in the first reading. It does include depending ordinance doctrine as being adopted by the council. And you announced a public hearing, and we've had that now, so I just want to make sure that the public understood that was in effect. As far as parks and recreation goes, Mr. Kemp had helped put together an ordinance. I have made some grammatical changes at the first reading to incorporate a couple of changes that the administrator had requested, one of which is that he not appoint a member to that board, that it be all council appointees. So that's been incorporated in what I, what you have before you, which you should have a red line in front of it, there in front of you, there's some, I'll call them grammatical edits that I put into there, some verb tenses to make it consistent with recommend, it being a recommendation and advisory board. One thing that it does do, it, this is replacing a defunct board, a hospital board, which we haven't had for years. That's why it's replacing that division so that it accomplishes two goals at one time. Formerly gets rid of that division that's in a ordinance redundantly and, or superficially, and then takes, this takes its place. The other changes that I, edits that I put in there were to reflect our current, Chapter 2, which is boards, commissions, and committees, to incorporate some of the general principles that we have as a county for committees. Administrator appoints a staff person to assist the board with its administrative duties, dealing with the minutes. I don't think I changed anything substantively. The ultimate goal is to have a citizen group to advise from each of the council members' areas on parks and recreational needs. And I'm happy to answer any questions. It would be the staff's recommendation to adopt the revised version that you have before you. We haven't had a public hearing yet. Hurricane got away getting things in, so it will be 50 days. Yes, we'll have a-
Any questions from council? Ms. Gobain? Ms. Claude?
I don't have any question. I'm just saying we're steady dealing with boards, boarders. We can't find people to serve on the boards. That's very needy. We need people to serve on boards. After a while, everybody in Jasper County will be on a board. And the board is just for, what you call it, my, advisory? They have no voting authority, whatever. So I hope that we can find people that will accept these positions.
Now, that is a question. Mr. Kemp, please. At this time, we'll call for a motion to approve, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-16, about the Board of Parks and Recreation for Jasper County.
Have a motion, we have a second?
Good.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you. Any ayes? Next, we have Ms. Kim Burgess, consideration of second reading of ordinance 2023-17 to amend Jasper County ordinance 2022-17 for fiscal year 2023, Jasper County budget, provide for amendments in the budget, and to carry over approved lapsing funds to fiscal year 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. As you stated, this is an ordinance which amends the fiscal year 23 budget for expenditures that were planned but were not, were not completed primarily due to delivery issues. So they are now being carried over into fiscal year 24. It also, there are a few items that were just small budget amendments, but again, the items were not expended and we've carried those over for the use of, say, for the current auditor and current treasurer. And then there are a couple of items at the bottom that are previously approved and they're just put in here to, for the entire budget, so that you see what the entire budget for fiscal year 23 will be. So, and that's, this is the second reading, and we will have a public hearing at the next meeting on the 18th.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Gobain? Ms. Claude? Ms. Chatter?
Yes, my dear. I guess on this sheet, right here, you have, the first one is the, the first line is the, I remember, the second line is the budget as we put out in 2023, correct?
So you're looking at the columns?
Yeah, I'm looking at the columns.
Yes, so the first column, after the description, the first column is the, basically the account number.
Right, I have no doubt.
And then the amount that was either budgeted as adopted or amended. So if there was not an amendment made, it would be as it was adopted. If there was an amendment made in fiscal year 23, which we have one, again, a lapsing fund carryover in August or September of 2022, so some of those numbers would have changed.
So like at the 80, so what's the 80 on the next one column?
So that's whether it's either increasing or decreasing.
So we increased it. So, and the third one's budgeted, adopted, for amendment, 920, I'm used to using the first one, 925.
Right, that's fiscal year 24.
And then on the next one, budget amendment, is 709. What's that?
So you're reducing that line item, new vehicles, in fiscal year 23 by $709,332.23, and you're carrying it over into the fiscal year 24 budget. So you're increasing that line item for fiscal year 24. So basically, you reduce one, increase the other.
So the way I look at it is we spent $980,000 already in 2023. That says May 31st. How come? I just don't understand how we, how, when I do the budget performance, it doesn't match up anywhere close to what we're advancing from last year.
It came from the budget performance report, but you haven't probably seen the most recent.
Well, the only one you gave me is 531.
Right.
So, and we, at that point, we were at 83, we had 83% views. So all we wanted to have left in May was $251,000.
So when you look at that budget performance, there's also amounts that are, that are in there because we have a purchase order or something. So when we canceled those purchase orders, that amount is no longer, I can't handle the term.
Encumbered.
Thank you, encumbered. Never start with an E. So anyway, it's no longer encumbered. So that reduces the total amount. It's, that amount encumbered is basically treated as if it were expended for budget purposes when we see that budget performance report. So we, if those, if those purchase orders were not fulfilled, they've been voided and canceled.
So you're treating it in progress?
And freeze it, yeah.
That should be, I know we should go forward, shouldn't we?
Well, we don't have any way for it to go forward in the, in the accounting system, so we have to avoid it, and this is how we bring it forward.
Okay, and then just the other thing is I think I worked on, you got at Y36.
I noticed that. That's the type of-
Okay. Thank you.
I'm corrected by the next reading.
Okay. At this time, we'll call for a, call for a motion for approval, please.
Still move. Second.
Second. We've had all the discussion, and at this time, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you, motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Next, we have citizen comments, open floor to the public. And we have our sign-in sheet here, and we have Ms. Frazier. Welcome, Ms. Frazier.
Thank you. Good evening, Councilwoman Salz and county council members and everyone here. Speaking on, my name is Hannah Frazier, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Cusahatchie Community Center. The residents of Cusahatchie and Gillis and Bill and surrounding areas were disappointed when we met on August 21st with county officials and MB Con in reference to the size of the Cusahatchie Community Center. The 2,500 square feet that they told us that the Cusahatchie Center would be is not accurate or adequate for the needs of our community center. We need to have another meeting soon because the plans that were presented to us did not reflect our floor plans. We look forward to meeting with you, and thank you for working with us as we really want our community center back. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have administrator's report from Mr. Folger.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you. I have a couple items to go through with you. The first one is, I failed to do this at the last meeting, although it was in my report. The county did receive the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Financial Reporting again this year, many years in a row. for Financial Reporting again this year, many years in a row, and certainly every year that Ms. Burgess has been here, if you would please join me in congratulating her and her team for receiving this...
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you. Exit 3 was my next topic, just to give you a brief update in your packet. I've included, I requested of our legal counsel, and they've provided a procedural schedule for the documents. You want to know what's next for you at the county council level with regard to exit 3. If you look at that, you'll see a lot of the city's actions that need to be taken to create the TIF, ME, and so forth. Looks like you'll be rolling in an October 16th meeting for a resolution to provide limited consent to the Tax and Government Financing District or the TIF in approving the TIF IGA or Intergovernmental Agreement. And then the other task that you will have, it's on the second page, beginning November 6th, will be the ordinance approving the financial documents. So we'll get all those to you as soon as you can, but I wanted to give you this preliminary procedural schedule so that you had it in case you wanted to attend some of the meetings with the city as well. I also wanted to report out again to you on the escrow account. Remind you that the county council authorized the contribution of $13.5 million in transportation sales tax to go to the project. Of that $13.5 million, initial $3.4 million had to be placed in escrow with SEDOT for design efforts in conjunction with the I-95 widening project. That has been up there. I've approved five draws from that $3.4 million. Total of a little over half a million dollars approved and 2.8 remaining. The rest of that money will come in later. I think the bid, bidding for this project is like the end of 2024, so you probably won't start to spend that remaining 10.1 until the year 2025. And I believe the way it works is the grant is spent first, and then you'll be working on dollar-for-dollar contribution with the developer's contribution, and that's where the 10.1 will come in. The other item I wanted to report out to you was on the intersection of Route 462 and Knolls Island Road. I know I've talked to you about this before. We had some residents that were concerned about the safety there and the potential of doing a turn lane there. We've looked at that, we've looked at additional right-of-way potential for DOT and clearing to get a better line of sight in that area. I brought you a report to you that was done pro bono by Jennifer Bragg of Jay Bragg Consulting a month or so ago, where she reviewed all the possibilities for that. I've since then come back to you and asked if you'd be willing to allow me to ask her for a cost proposal for that project to get it started. She has provided such, two tasks, one is conceptual plans both for the intersection site distance improvement and also the turn lane improvements, and then a task two to coordinate with DOT on the intersection site distance exception, acceptance of additional right-of-way in their agreement to maintain that. I believe that these items are eligible for CTC funding. Both those phases, first phase $15,200 not to exceed, and the second one not to exceed Question to you is, does the council want me to proceed with trying to have staff request this of the CTC, or is it not important to you to proceed with?
Any, Mr. Galvay? Ms. Claude?
I don't have a problem with them trying to request.
Any questions? Mr. Kemp? I have a question.
We'll drive on then. Just didn't want you to be surprised at CTC. Okay, the, one quick issue, KCI, who is the engineering firm that is doing the consulting work for DOT on the I-95 widening, we, staff's been working with them on all three legs of it, but most importantly, the first leg, which you know is from Savannah Bridge, Savannah River Bridge to exit 8. And we've done a accounting and GIS, accounting of all signages, signage that's been permitted through the county, billboards and such, and they are out on foot today and tomorrow doing an onsite inspection of all the signs. So if you see people out there moving or get questions about that, that's what that is, is the KCI team out there working on the I-95 widening project. New River Landing, this issue came up about trash at the landing. New River Landing is one of Mr. Lucas's projects, looking at all our landings, and surprise, surprise, they have questionable ownership responsibility, and this is one that is actually owned by Cyclone Department of Transportation, not the county. County has been maintaining that for a number of years. County has done capital improvements to that landing. County has built shelter at that landing and traditionally tried to maintain that landing. So I put in your packet the initial information from DOT that talks about the lineage of how they got it by condemnation back in 1966, and they have a proposed simple transfer of the, of the property to the county. If you are inclined for the county to try to take that over, it's a policy decision for you. A lot of people think you own it anyway. If you take it over, I would like the ability to try to negotiate with DOT for that transfer. If you don't want to get involved in it and want DOT to keep it, you need to let me know, and I'll drop it now. So those are the two questions before you. Which would you prefer?
Mr. Fordham, is there any drawbacks? Do us take the ownership of it as far as maybe it maintains the road or, you know, infrastructure-wise?
Additional maintenance, obviously, but, you know, over the years, you have worn that anyway. It's just a technical ownership, so I can go either way with this. We can force DOT and try to keep them to keep it clean, or you can just embrace it and take it into your holdings as one of the landings that you maintain, that you have done for many years. But again, if you do that, I would like the authority to try to negotiate the actual transfer with them.
Any questions?
I would like to see it transferred into us. I mean, you go buy that, and it looks like...
We would maintain it anyway.
Yeah, we're trying to maintain it anyway, and on top of that, it's a bad reputation for Jasper to be that way, and we have no control.
Ms. Kemp? Ms. Claude?
I don't care.
Galvay?
Right around the county, find the next one, the county's too.
Okay, we need to have a motion for approval, please.
So move.
If you just want to give me general consensus, you want me to negotiate a transfer, I would bring it back to you for your later...
Okay, you have our consensus.
One place, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
But I've been, that was since I came on the gas, that's one thing I really bit down on, the infrastructure in the county. And we all, we've got to work hard, easy to stay to South Carolina, Georgia, Mississippi, and Alabama, and they tore all the pieces. And one thing I've been against, and I'll always be against it, is all that development when you don't have the infrastructure. And we need to get, we need to put pressure on the state of South Carolina or somebody and get these roads fixed. And some places get widened because the traffic gets worse and worse and worse and worse. And when they get blacktopped that road, that's it, that's all they do. It'll be tore up and they'll stop. That's all they do, is blacktopped. And we got to work infrastructure in the country, and we can't get, it don't seem like, they keep saying, well, we go starting D-7 with 462, we go starting, we don't see how it's happening. And somebody got to put pressure on, somehow we got to put pressure on the state SEDOT to get this stuff done. But that's all I got.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fordham, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On this widening, everybody keeps on saying, from the bridge up. Every once in a while, I hear from DOT, they're going to be doing that bridge also.
Which bridge also?
The bridge across, the bridge across...
Savannah?
On 95, I don't know the name of it is.
Savannah River Bridge?
The Savannah River Bridge, because it goes to two lanes, and we're going to be three lanes and...
Are you talking about the Route 17 project versus the...
No, I'm talking about the action 95.
Yes, yes.
The 95 bridge.
Yes.
Going across.
Right.
You keep, everybody keeps on saying that, everybody keeps on saying 95 from the bridge up, yet sometimes you talk to DOT, and they say they're going to do the bridge also.
Yes, sir.
So is that part of...
The bridge, the bridge also.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yes, sir. That's my understanding, the bridge also.
Yes, sir. How's that?
So if legal gives administrative authorities to check anything about Knolls Island for the citizen, cutting them bushes down so they can be able to see when they go around that curb? Is it...
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, we can't, we can't do that without agreements in place because then we'll have the additional liability, but the consultant has shown us how we can eventually get to that path, but that process would have to be funded and negotiated with DOT, and we're proposing to, to request the funding from the county transportation committee in order to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have a consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda before I ask for a motion to approve it? Hearing noise, I will call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next, we have councilman comments, and we'll start with our vice chairman, Ms. Claude.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm glad to see everybody made it to the council. And I'll see you all at the next council meeting.
Councilman Galvay, it's good to see you here with us tonight. I remind everybody at all...
It's good to be here, I tell you. I'm out of clothes from last week, but I think I'm on the rebound, and also we will get the free down now.
Well, I remind everybody at our previous meetings to keep your family in our prayers, and I know you've had a lot of challenges, so we're glad to have you back.
Thank you. Pray on the one whole thing.
Yes, sir. Councilman Kemp?
Yes, just want to thank the sheriff department and the first responders, the wire department over the way they keeping us safe. I think they were quite busy, or at least appeared that way. Every time I went over there, just thanked them for working on holiday, they were not there, so. Anyway, and I just wanted to bring up the subject of E-packets. Every meeting, the council gets a set of E-packets, and it's all the information that we're going to be discussing. You, as a people, can also see that packet. And I just want to, I don't know how many people know that. So if you have a question, look at the packet first and then ask questions. That's about it, thank you.
That's it?
Good to see you.
I want to thank everybody for being with us this afternoon. It's nice to see people want to participate and stay informed and be a part of what we're doing up here. It's nice to have our community involved. We've got a lot of things going on, a lot more than just what we talked about tonight. I can assure you, we have some great things going on. Exit 3, economic development opportunities, growth, and also building the conservation, so we're trying to, trying to work on every piece of the puzzle to make them fit, so we encourage your participation and your involvement, and thank y'all for being with us. At this time, we'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Have a second?
Sure.
All in favor, stand up. Y'all have a good night.